And call this meeting to order at seven oh two. This is the Bristol Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, seven oh two. This month is the organizational meeting. Item two on the agenda, any additions, removal, or adjustments of any of the items? Possibly, pending.
We barely have a forum. I know we don't have a forum to change anything that was proposed. Do we have enough for a forum to elect? Officers?
Do we need to do search?
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, for true.
I'm not sure.
No, it is a two thirds for the vote. We have enough to run a meeting.
We need to elect somebody by two thirds.
That's why I was just looking to see if it was. That, or if it was just to change it was two thirds that I could not recall.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
But does it say that?
It just says shall elect. There's no qualifications after that.
Majority of the full nine member commission.
Any changes will require a two thirds vote.
Right. Which is more important for new business, so.
Yeah, but wouldn't it be two thirds of those present?
No.
It's two thirds of the whole committee for change.
We have five present though, yeah?
You need six.
Well, five, seven is more than two thirds, right?
No, no, we would need six votes for two thirds to change anything for policies and procedures, but we would only need a majority of. Being five to elect officers if all were in agreement, right?
I believe so.
Because I just did the math here, look at it again, but. Fifteen twenty first is a bigger number than fourteen twenty first, so five sevenths is like we have five of unanimous vote. That would be two thirds of our board.
No, no, two thirds would be six.
Oh, there's nine. Oh, I thought we had seven. Never mind.
So let me see.
All right, all right, well. You proposing?
I think we can move forward if everything. They have to table it, right?
New business being tabled to the next meeting?
No.
Table the whole.
I think the EV one we wanted to get done, right?
But isn't that what you're saying?
No.
That's continuing business. I mean organizational matters, the elect by chair and vice chair and new business are both things that having the majority is important. We have enough to start the meeting ironically, but not enough to continue on the meeting.
Well, it just, well, we technically have enough to continue on. I'm just concerned about.
Somebody.
The weight of it.
Yeah.
Somebody chooses to change something with the policies and procedures, which is an action item tonight. We don't have enough to do that.
Right.
If we understand that.
But we have enough to say we can do it again at a different time.
Well, it's specific to the organizational meeting to change this.
Is that something that could be continued to a date certain?
Um, I suppose it could be. On maybe okay.
Yeah. Not officially close the organizational meeting. That's the only thing I could think to do.
Get into heavy duty uh. Meeting protocols.
Yes.
Good thing we're reviewing the policies and procedures.
Yeah.
Someone to learn more. All right. Well, with that, shall we move on to item three? Um, organizational matters, elect chair, elect vice chair. Um, with the acknowledgement that we have enough for a quorum of five out of nine. Move over that. Are there any nominations for chair?
And now I'm gonna Kevin.
I'll second that, yeah.
Are you sure you can do this again? Yeah, I bet you are. Okay.
I think this is the last one of this party, right?
Last one possible in the world. Are you willing to serve?
I will, I will do it.
Having a second, do we have? Uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, did you hear me? Sorry. Okay.
Or. Which? Wait, that's not. Oh, because you can't.
Can, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll see.
Okay. All right, so five oh.
Yeah.
Kevin is our chair, onto vice chair, Yankee chair. Does anyone have a nomination for vice chair?
What does that mean?
I'm near wrong.
There's a second. All right, um, those in favor say aye.
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 All right, five oh carries. We have a chair and a vice chair.
Yay.
Okay.
Kevin, I'm passing it back to you.
Oh, thank you. So it's interesting that, and I picked this up from being on a school board where they are much. Conscious of Robert's rules and we are. Um, they always start in the meeting, even though the. Bylaws will say that you're in those elected positions until replaced. They always start to meeting mutually, that's why I asked Daisy or have asked.
Yes.
Before, so anyway, this kind of. And there it goes. So any public comment? Here and none, uh, we'll move on to continuing business.
All right.
Which is the first is to review the PZ, PZA interim bylaw presentation. It will morph into a discussion.
Okay, so. One last time going through this definition for clarity. Non electric vehicle charging stations, the public or private parking space served by electric vehicle service equipment. Um, including all signs, information, pavement services, service markings, fee collection systems, and protective equipment. And which a vehicle is recharged, electric vehicle service equipment are the electrical apparatus and protective system that provides an electrical charge and varying voltage to an electric vehicles. Um, I kept the levels in here as this is an interim bylaw. Um, it has a specified end date, which in my mind. Um, signifies that the worries of technology advancing and these levels becoming obsolete. While a valid concern for this situation, I feel like having these levels here is important for capturing the. Fast charging ESP that we're trying to mitigate the impacts they have on our community and by clearly defining what a fast charger is. Um, compared to a level one or a level two is important, um, as we're trying to. In fact, um, mitigate impact on our community. Bringing into an exemption, um, having level ones exempt, um, if they're for personal non-commercial use. Uh, put that personal non-commercial use in as it was a concern that someone could have a fleet of level one chargers. So putting, just making it very specific that this is a exemption if it is for personal use. Um. And then moving, I will move forward on to section six eleven, uh, that governs all other chargers. Um. Section, section six eleven is broken into four categories. Uh, requirements for all electric vehicle charging stations. And these, this is not changed, I'm still protecting. The equipment so it doesn't get damaged, you have to have at least one space per um, equipment. And you have to comply with any state permits and state regulations for the floodplain. Um, second. Uh, moving into an allowed use accessory use for single family dwellings and duplexes provided they comply with the criteria set above. This is for folks who, and that's an allowed accessory use on a permitted. Um, so if you have an EV at home and you just want to get a charger. It's allowed, you don't have to go through a permit that was brought up as bringing as being on us on uh. Landowners.
Can you say that again?
Electric vehicle charging station shall be an allowed accessory use for single family dwellings and duplexes provided they comply with the criteria set forth above.
Now be any level. That's what will happen, but you're, any level would. Be acceptable for us in this?
Yeah, I. I mean, the idea is that, um, as, as we've discussed, level three fast charging requires three phase power. Um, if someone wanted to put a level three charger in at their house. Um, it would, that would get caught in the um, conditional use as it's um. As it falls under the criteria of any, um, any level three gets thrown into conditional use, so if someone did. Did want to do that, um, but that could be something that is defined.
But it's allowed. It is allowed, it's then right here.
Yeah.
That I could, let's say I have a duplex or something, I put it in and I invite every, and I charge for it for people to come. I mean, I think the real, to me, the one thing that makes like a general criteria is that whether it's going to be commercial or non-commercial. And that seems to be somehow gotta be in here. Um, somebody will bend the rule if they can make money.
Yeah, well, the, this condition here is meant to remove the um, owner's permitting process for. Personal use at a single family dwelling. Um, that could be further defined, I see your point of making it clear. Um, and then when you get down into accessory use that are for supporting use to a primary structure. Um, should be a permanent accessory use following the conditions below. Um, fee collection and public use is prohibited. Um, not exceeding two at a proposed location, so this accessory use would be more for offices, multi-family units. Um. Commercial fleets, situations like that. The, um, this condition two is for single family dwellings and duplexes for private use that can be further defined. Um.
So you put that in, that sounds good.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm still confused about, so under item two. Allowed accessory use for single blah blah, does, does that require a permit to come and get a permit or not?
That's what I'm saying, allow use of.
Allow use, but. I, I hate to be a stickler about this, but I don't read it that way.
You don't read it that way?
No, I, I could see, I could see somebody making the point that you still need to get a permit for that.
Like an accessory structure.
Yeah. So if that is the intent, I certainly welcome that.
Yeah, that's the intent, um. I base this allowed accessory use on other regulations, um, where. Permitting is not required, um, and is an allowed use of. Um. Kind of similar to, not similar, but with exemptions, it's basically saying you don't have to follow regulations. I understand why that's confusing, um, that would be something I will clarify with Kevin Brown, um, on the league ways of. Making sure my intent with that language is clear of saying you don't need a permit for this, it is acceptable for you to do this without a permit, you just have to follow these. Regulations above hand.
I had a question, it said two per wherever that was, sorry, two per unit or whatever, is that? That's per unit, not per property, like if somebody had a property and they had two duplexes on it, they could have two chargers for. The one and two for the other. Is that right?
No, that is saying that there, um, you cannot have more than two electric vehicle charging station. At a proposed location. Um, which is. My.
So if you. Yeah, I mean, if you're renting to four people, you can still only have two. Chargers at that.
Most of these have dual ports, so two chargers.
Okay.
For ports, um.
Oh, okay, I thought was each, each one was for one car.
Oh, no. If, so one electric vehicle service equipment is, um, like. One has the charging. Block there.
So to, to follow on with Melissa's question though, is if you had. Uh, four unit apartment complex. And you wanted to put out four cables, wouldn't that be become a conditional use as opposed to an accessory use?
Hmm.
And just flip one to the other.
Well, the. Like I was saying, Melissa, the charger is electric vehicle service equipment, so the two ports is part of that one. Um.
Yeah, so you're gonna, so you're saying one, one. One station can charge two cars at a time.
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Power will give you is one cord.
One cord.
One charge.
One, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know. So I, I'm, I was sort of thinking, eh, I don't like that, but then. I was also thinking that. With a multi-family situation, you would all of a sudden. Be into conditional use as opposed to, but maybe I'm misunderstanding, assuming something there.
I was going back to the definition and trying to. Make sure it all jives because. That, that does say space, spaces. Served by service equipment. Including all the markings, et cetera, et cetera, to charge a vehicle, so. It, it's not clear if it is. One. Power supply and unit despite the number of cords to. Each space for each cord, or if it's each space is a. EVCS. Despite how it's fed, whether it's one unit. For two spaces. That would still be two EVCS. Or whether it's just one cord and the space is the EVCS.
Yeah, I see.
And, and just like the proposed location is that proposed one single stand proposed. Location in terms of the property or within so many feet or build structure.
Building. Yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
There's.
I see what you're saying.
A lot of minutias in the.
Yeah, I see what you're saying there.
I had another question too then. On that, because you know, excuse me, it can't be for commercial, you can't collect fees. But if somebody puts a charging station in, say they have. Like you were saying, maybe a four unit or something, and they just want to put one in or even two, they're not going to be connected to the electric. Uh, uh, power of any of those apartments or, or it's. You know what I'm saying? You can't, it's gonna have to be a sep, it would be a separate electrical. For the property owner. Unless it's just like, say, a, a single, a, a. A single family home or a single home, they put one in and it's hooked up to their electric, but you can't do that if you have an apartment building.
Well, I would.
So what? Mm-hmm.
My initial thoughts there are most multipurpose or multi-unit apartment houses have. The, the. Landowner, the landlord, what do you want to call them, has co- common. Common areas that they have to power that aren't tenant responsibilities, so it's likely that they would have service.
Right, you mean like outdoor lights and?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the thing is, my point is, if they're, they're going to probably do it that way, how do they charge their tenants for using it? Do they just include it in the rent? But if they include it in the rent, then that can't be, if somebody doesn't have an electric. Car, they're getting charged for charging a car, you know what I'm saying? It seems like they would probably charge a fee to their. Tenants every time they used it.
They, they could do that or else, the other thing I was gonna say is the tenant would arrange to have it. Put on their.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they could do that, but you, I would, but what I'm saying is that fee collection in public use, but also. Fee collection, you, you just have to put in from, for non-tenant. Non-residents. You know, because if they have to, if they have to collect a fee from their. From their tenant because they're using the charger, then you don't want to get caught up in there where you say you can't collect fees for it.
Well, and when it's public.
That, that one.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say that one, that accessory use that we're looking at right there.
Yeah.
Is, it would not be for an apartment building, because that's tied to the single family and duplex.
Okay, I thought that, I thought there was also a thing about fee collection in that, but not, just not.
There is a fee collection in this accessory use, which applies to. Um, chargers at single family dwellings or duplexes.
Okay, I'm just thinking, but doesn't every time somebody goes and plugs in at a public. Station for electric, it must use their credit card, right?
Either that or you got an account with a charging company.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Or whatever, but. I, what I'm just not seeing is you have a four unit or bigger place, there's gonna be some charging stations there and people are gonna have to use their credit cards or whatever to get their juice. And I was actually driving there and get some juice. I just don't see how you can stop that just from being a commercial zone. It was in this light. Come on, you know, sure, guy wants to make money, people want to charge up, it's gonna.
You could do that, I, I can see what you do that, I'm not sure.
It's private property though, you can't just drive on to. I don't know what you think.
Yeah, I got lots of friends.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, who's collecting the fees? That's the thing, you said you can't charge fees.
It goes straight in through the credit machine right to my account.
Yeah, I meant to you, to you as a landlord or to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, that's a fee then, so I don't know how you.
So it's commercial, that's the point, this is commercial all of a sudden, and I don't see what's happening.
I mean, it's possible, it is possible, I think it's probably possible to, to lock them so that. Only you give keys to individual to get in or scan a whatever, not a lock, but you know what I mean? It'll be locked down until you have a card that you, that you swipe to.
Lock now, and I want people to come in and use it because they're making money, right?
That's what I'm saying, but we're not supposed to allow, that's not gonna be allowed, so I'm saying there's a way. Around that.
I think we're getting off track, so I think, I think the way to solve that concern.
Is when you talk about. What's the definition? Um. Fee collection of part of you, the charge is prohibited through paying at the, at the charger. So you can't.
Like a plain of sale.
Yeah, you can't, I mean.
For single family, no problem.
And if you got a duplex, you can't, if you're, you can't put one out there, or if you got a four apartment thing, you can't put one out there. With a, with the. Point of sale, if you want to call it that, at the charger. Now, whether the landlord wants to go back and back charges tenants or whatever, who cares? But you can't have people doing, pulling up, pulling out their phone and beeping the thing.
Yeah.
How does that work on a, on a tenant there? Now, I can see having a dedicated card or something. But that could also be fiddled with, I mean, easily, so.
I mean, could it be that just the fee collection part, because that was a concern of. Folks are gonna put a, a charger point at a multi-family apartment building. And then it would be a commercial use, because it's open to the public, and the fee collection was put in to kind of prevent. The commercial use, but that is a good point that. The landlord or whoever owns that might need to charge their tenants something. So maybe removing the fee collection from that entirely, say, public use that it is for.
Tenant, residence use, yeah.
But I, hey.
You can say that.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you can't do everything, I know, but enforcement is very.
See that, the other thing, if these guys are putting in level two charging for an extended charge. There's not too many people that are gonna pass by and have the patience to wait four or six hours for it, I mean, just. Logic of the setup is kinda like.
Put the level two, so when you get to level three, this is all gonna change.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's why when, when it comes to the, the accessory use and the single family dwellings, the goal is to make it. As.
But painless.
Painless, but also mitigate any large impacts of like, making sure that there are proper parking spaces that you're not. Messing with electrical code issues by proper replacement. The big impacts that we're trying to mitigate come from these level three chargers, which.
Okay.
Um, are where you need to have the three phase power, you need to have the transformers, um. I was at the Healthy Living up in Burlington, and they have seven Tesla chargers there. Um, very conveniently hidden, right to the left of those chargers is some very nicely landscaped trees and shrubbery. But right behind those trees is a very large, I would say twelve by ten transformer. So that's, that's the impact that I am most concerned about when it comes to electric vehicle charging, and it's the most concern that I heard from y'all. So when it comes to the interim bylaw, the most important parts to me. Are ensuring that rampant commercial. Use of chargers doesn't.
And that's only gonna be on level three, that is existing now.
Yeah, level two, like Kevin was saying.
Nine or six hours.
Yeah, that's gonna be someone who's wanting at a multi-family unit who has the cards, they come home from work, they plug in.
Yep.
And you want to make sure that that is properly, um, protected from, uh, snowplows or it's properly placed.
Okay, totally solved, except on means of paying. Uh, can I use my personal credit card?
It depends on the charging station and how they set it up, um, and. If they, if a landlord decides they don't want to charge anything for it currently, because they only have one tenant out of ten units. So they just have it there as a resource, but the. Power that's actually been taking is pretty nominal, there's no need to charge for it. But then maybe they do need to charge for.
Six people have electric cars and that has to change.
Yeah, so. But the, the fee collection and public use starts really coming into when you get into these conditional use of. You're having more than six electric vehicle service equipment, which, um, I have here a note to clear up. Is the electric vehicle service equipment just, is the charger and the ports, or is it? I'll have that cleared up, um, but that, that's the big.
Okay.
Big impact today.
Good to go, cool, thanks.
Yeah. Melissa, do you have, does that?
No, I'm sorry, I just, on, on the. Uh. Part two for the, you know. Is that, is it, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, my brain's not working, um. Can they have as many charging cables as charging stations, whichever it is, as there are tenants? Or is it still limited? That's, that's kind of what I was.
That, that would, the way I read this, that would kick it out of accessory use and into conditional use.
Yeah.
To have more than two. It's not saying it's not allowed, it's just a different use and different.
Okay, so you just had different permit, but they can still have, like, if they have four tenants and all four of them have electric cars, they can. Have, did I say guitars? Oh my gosh, electric cars.
There's a no guitar limit.
That second condition is basically saying, and the proposed location to clarify is meant to be the property location.
Okay.
So if you have a, a parcel that has a multi-family unit and you're wanting to put an electric vehicle. Um, in one of your parking lots, but then you have a parking lot on the back of the building and you want to put one there. That would be two at the proposed location, that is the proper. That would be two at the proposed location that is the property, and if you go in two at that. Property. Conditional use.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
I, and I've made a note to clarify that. Even further. But that, that's the intent with that condition is basically saying. You can have these level twos, but once you start exceeding more than two. Um, that's starting to get into a more impactful situation, means you're now taking up more parking spaces than you have. Um, you're starting to take more power, more. More impact, the more chargers you have.
Thanks.
Um, moving on to the conditional use, again, this is public or commercial use, um, having. Keeping it at a max of six of the the service equipment, which. I will further define to mean the actual charger, um, a lot. The charger block, if it has one port, two port, it's the charging block itself, um, that's my mind.
The no maximum number of connections, so if there's six with four connections each, they'd have twenty-four.
So I'll cap it at two.
If you're going into that.
I would, I would suggest considering each plug.
Each plug as.
Because each plug is gonna take a parking spot. And whatnot, I mean, typically with level threes, you got two ports coming out of one. One kiosk, if you will.
So that would be two.
You really, you need two parking spots for that.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. So, one electric vehicle service equipment.
So you would say six. Which I think certainly for Bristol, it seems like.
And I put six because I feel like you could have three. Ports with two chargers each, or you can have six individual chargers, however, six just felt.
Not, we're not experts, but we've traveled. And I don't think. Typically, at least typically, I can say typically, if not absolutely, we haven't seen a charging location with. More than six. It seems like six is the magic number.
A healthy living one, it's like six of.
Oh, I'm sorry, we don't have a Tesla car, so.
Let me, let me pull.
Tesla racks them right up.
I, I mean, but, okay.
Is that the Buc-E's of EVs?
Is that also like, like a Tesla, when I fix the Teslas and other cars going to some other type? Still, all like that?
So there is, there is a transition to the Tesla standard, but it's only going forward and now.
Seven.
Seven?
We'll see how long we have to be concerned with Tesla. You know?
Well.
There's gonna be other, other people coming up to to take those, you know, that's, there's their spots, hopefully.
The charging, Tesla charging is top is is the standard. But anyway, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was talking about company, not the function, or how they work, you know?
Yeah, the, so six, I feel like if anyone wanted to do more than six, they're in the wrong town.
These are six plugs, so.
Vehicle connections or I don't know.
Or six individual key ops.
That's, that's fine, I mean, that's a lot.
Pluggy thingies.
I'll write that as a definition. Your car dongle, you can only have one per car, um, and then other. Uh, conditions for the conditional use is that the cords must um have sufficient length to accommodate. Uh, cord variation, so if a car has the port on the front or maybe on the back, depending on manufacturer. The cord itself allows for the safe charging of the vehicle, no matter how someone parks. Hopefully, they park well, though. We can't really enforce that, you could put lines down.
So you mean, so everybody, if they're in the back, I mean, people would back in normally, you'd think, but you couldn't go, you're saying, okay, pull in front, Martin, that cord has to go all the way to.
Yeah.
I guess, is that normal, or, I mean.
Those cords are liquid cooled, so wherever they come out of the factory, as they are.
So you have some experience, though. I have no.
Never had a problem connecting.
So you go all the way to the end of the car?
We just back.
Yeah, I was saying, so, okay, I just. It's, uh, you're saying here that the. Kiosk or other, let's say with the two hoses, the hoses have to be able to reach the back of the cars. I, is that?
They just have to, they have to have the sufficient length to accommodate different variations of where the port might be. It's, it's, it's kind of a safety thing for.
Well, I get it, except unless people don't make them that way. I don't know, I say I'm ignorant, but I don't know if they make them, because of course, like, if they're, if it's on the back of your car, you're back into the spot.
Yeah. That's why it's a condition for the conditional use, because the um, the level three chargers, their cords, um. Already kind of made to the standard, it's just a further.
Somebody comes in, somebody comes in and presents this, they should be able to demonstrate that the cords are readily accessible. Accessible and shouldn't be an issue.
But they might think you, you'd be able to back in to get close, like.
I mean, that, there's no reason why you can't expect people to back in though.
No, they will, but this doesn't force them to have a long hose, that's all I'm saying, I don't really care, I'm just saying, it's thousand, you're forcing a company to have a long hose.
Well, it just says sufficient length.
Okay, well, front to back, back to front, that's, some cars, that's quite a long distance. And like, even if you go to a gas station, you can't just park anywhere, you know? Those hold, if you don't, and you be pulling the wrong way, there are things on the other side, you're not gonna reach it.
Yeah.
I could move my car and turn around and go back the other way around. It's coming. I'm, I'm just wondering.
Yeah. Um. This is, yeah, I see, I see, I see. That can be.
I think you can just. I don't know what the standards are. Is, are we getting too deep in the weeds on that, and should it just be sufficiently to accommodate port variations, the end?
Period.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest. Great, I love taking away things. Um, and then the final one, um, just if there is gonna be signage for the um. Vehicles that it has to conform to the traffic control devices. Um, for general information and regulatory information, that's just basically saying, if you're having any signs that say EV charging only or um. Two-hour charging or those kind of informational signs, they have to meet the standards of traffic control, a safety measure. Um, especially for larger charging stations, um, mitigating impacts, we want things to be done safely. And done correctly, so if someone could just put up a laminate sign that says free chargers, uh, if you want it to be.
Yeah, a car building.
And then, um, update to the use matrix. Uh, offices and services, and then this is where. In, in the use matrix, the categories identified, they would go under vehicle charging station. As this would be the conditional use aspect, and I'm gonna go under automotive uses. Similar to the vehicle charge, uh, vehicle service station. Um.
Was there a reason, I get the HDR is mostly residential where it is, right? Was there a reason the Village Residential? Was, no, I'm trying to think of the zones. It's not conditional.
For the accessory electric vehicle charging station?
Really conditional.
Why it was not like conditional?
Yeah.
Um, because we don't really have that much Village Residential zone left.
Oh, that was on the north side, sorry, I was getting confused with Village Mix.
Yeah, yeah, VR is kind of.
Yeah.
Well, the, I don't know, has anybody else got questions?
Um, I just want to circle back to the exception. At some point, whenever we're ready to move on to that.
So I, I guess.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, if if anyone's, excuse me, if anyone's interested, the typical length of the charging cable is twenty to twenty-five feet.
Oh, geez, okay. All right. Thanks.
So the zone that we are spot zoning, not spot zoning, but the zone we're considering. With this proposal is, what zone is that?
Village Business.
Okay, way over there.
It's a little.
Because of the Sprout House or whatever it's called now.
The car, uh.
Where the chocolate place.
That got.
Cause that's in, that's in Village Business.
Yeah, and that's where the parking lot is.
Right.
Um, so, no matter what, any permits there need cycle line review, because they are in the downtown, does it?
Doesn't make it there.
Yeah.
And then I guess my other question is, um, so if you. Walk through this thing, I've got, I want to put. A charger on my tenant's side of the house. If I come down through here, or I get to this two that we already talked about. Underneath six eleven, and I pop out there because. It's single-family dwelling. And comply with all that other stuff, I don't need a permit, babe, I'm done. But, so then, this whole line that says accessory electric vehicle charging stations has to do with. Whatever doesn't fall out at that condition, like multi, multi. Family units, or maybe a private.
Office.
Office or something like that, baby, comes down here, if it doesn't follow that one, it goes down into a conditional use.
Yeah, that's the goal, that's, that was the intention with the, the.
So that allowed use that you're going for with that would be an exemption, and so that, that's what I wanted to circle back.
Yep, 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 yep.
That needs to be built into the three oh one section of exemptions, otherwise you're just muddying the waters by throwing. Another exemption in, out of the exemption.
Yeah.
And so it just needs to be, that exemption just needs to be rephrased, whether it, because it's already all. Level ones are exempt, right, for personal use, which would. Fall within that category, and then the only question is, are level twos then also exempt for. Single-family and duplexes under that, and if they are, you just, we need to add that wording in there.
Yeah.
And that would clean that up a little.
That's, that's essentially what I was, that's a good point, I, I think I was. Trying to figure out that it, in my mind, you don't need a permit for this.
Which, which is the exemption.
Yeah, should be the exemption, and you're correct, that can, this wording can be put into section three oh one. With the level ones being exempt, and then level two.
As an accessory to single-family.
Duplexes are exempt from this regulation.
Well, it's already under exemption, so you just, the way, if you read the other exemptions, the way they, I was just taking a quick look at that.
Do you have to get more complicated than say an all alternating current AC level, one and two electric vehicle. Equivalent for personal, not commercial, you should be exempt.
I, I don't think so.
So then you don't have to clarify.
Single-family dwelling and all that.
That's what I'm guessing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that sounds correct to me, that's for personal, non-commercial use. Yeah.
I think so, then you still have your accessory use and conditional use defined under there, under your six eleven.
Perfect, that.
We actually did for a while have two chargers on our location. And then we had some tenants, I don't know, your vehicle, then they moved. But their charger went on. Got to keep the wiring, so I can advertise, I've got a connection for a charger now. Bring your charger.
Bring your dongle.
Bring your charger, all right.
Um, that, thank you, Rob. Yeah, that, that is.
Is there any other discussion about the proposal as AZ has presented it?
Uh, timeline wise, do we need to take action on this tonight?
There is an action item here.
But I mean, was that the, the timeline we're going for to get this something off this meeting?
I think so.
Yeah.
And, and it says, there's some semantics involved with it, we're not going to approve it, we're gonna endorse it as modified.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the select board. Even, even our zoning regulations, as they get reviewed by the select board, they can change things, but. I mean, we've seen a great amount of respect from the select board on our deliberations, so I'm sure they'll take them to heart. So if we are done with discussion. Uh, I believe the next thing to do is, um, act, take the action to endorse. The interim bylaws, and I would suggest we do it as we modified here through this discussion to some point. To some, somehow capture that. Enter a motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse the interim bylaw that's been presented with the. Changes that have been discussed to exemptions and wording uh so far.
What's the seconds? Any further discussion?
I actually just had a question, I'm sorry, I second it, but I have a question, um, does this get, um, once you make the changes stuff, is it? Or anything like this, is it proofread by someone else just for like typos and things like that? A period somewhere that changes the complete meaning of the sentence?
There will be, this, um, I'll, I'll be running this by Kevin Brown, um. For his legal.
Ah, okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, anything else? There was one typo in the first definition of EVSC, EV. Um, it's that first one, it's SVE instead of ESN.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I've written that so many times.
Yeah, easy to do, you go fast and they get, they switch places.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you, AZ.
Yes, thank you all so much, it's been fun.
Uh, new business, I'm sorry, Melissa, I just, I'm gonna say something.
I was just laughing at the face, AZ. When you said it's been fun, you said it's been fun, and then you was kinda.
Okay, moving on, discussion, new business discussion, review policies and procedures, which. We can discuss it, we can't act on it if there's a desire to act, because we do not have a two-thirds. Uh, majority uh with us tonight, but nonetheless, we can discuss it. Is there anybody that has anything they want to?
I, I don't know about discussing it, because when we do get a quorum, we're just gonna have to, it's, we're gonna go through it all again. You know what I'm saying?
I think we need to discuss it tonight, but we can't.
We can't take action, but we need to address it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Action, we'd have to defer the action to next meeting, but we should be discussing it here and closing it with this meeting.
Oh, okay, so there will be no more discussion in the next meeting?
Well, discussion will be open back up.
It'll be open because we have, we'll have a motion on the floor, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so I guess, anybody have any discussion?
My, well, my personal. Belief is that the uh. The term limit should, should be revoked. Uh, with having annual. Annual elections. With having annual elections, I feel that that is sufficient protection enough to avoid, and I get that. The concern is the. Uh, at the.
Power of incumbency.
Yeah, just, just ruling and, and, and being forced through, but.
I, 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 I hear you, the two people that had concerns. About that issue are not here tonight.
Yeah.
So we won't be hearing that side of the discussion.
Yeah.
And personally, I've thought about this, although. This is me, doesn't.
Yeah.
I've thought about how much more, how much longer I want to do this, this will be year five, but you know. I've thought about how much more, how much longer I wanna do this. This will be year five, but you know. AZ has taken on a role as planning and zoning administrator that. I would spend. Four hours, five, six hours developing an agenda and putting it together. I don't do anymore because AZ is doing it. So. As far as a chairperson, there's a lot less. Work that I made for myself. To some, to a large degree.
Yeah.
Um, that's not there anymore. And and. Now, she was still here coached me on that on a couple of different occasions, so. To utilize a planning office. So I mean, that makes. That function a lot easier to be in, if you will.
Yeah.
That's actually something I wanted to bring up, um, just in the membership. It might be a small thing, but the zoning administrator will attend plenty commission meetings on an as needed basis. Maybe that wording can be revised.
And be we as needed as every meeting.
Yeah, I I think, I feel like that's a holdover from when it wasn't necessarily an obligation and it was, uh. If we ask you to be there for, cause we need you, you will be there instead of this is outside my office hours sort of thing. I don't know, cause I don't know the history of it, but that's what it seems like.
Yeah, that was just the one thing.
I I don't know when. So those, I was on zoning and planning. In the late eighties, maybe early nineties. I don't think it was very far into the nineties. And it was. One board with two functions and you just flipped your hat depending on what you were doing.
Yeah.
And and so. Since then, over the years, and these bylaws have come to fruition through that gap. Or not gap, but the years I wasn't active. Um, and I think things are a whole lot different in how we operate as a planning commission and a BZA than I were.
Yeah.
So.
Well, well, even when I started. Six, seven years ago, it was dual function still before the DRB. Cause the DRB only started three year or four years ago. When we enacted this.
Right, but there was some other acronym though, right?
Well, there was the ZBA, which was the zoning board of adjustment, but they only handled the. Um, waivers and variances sort of stuff, the typical subdivision applications were still coming through. Planning commission still doing that typical site plan review. So, yeah, it's it's a big difference, but I expect nobody to feel. Beholden to to do anything they don't wanna do or expect anybody to carry on. Because nobody wants to do it if they don't wanna do it or anything like that. And I don't want. Anybody to feel like they're expected to do that, cause. Everybody's time is worth the same to themselves as, you know.
Each other, so. Yeah, I'm grateful that the load is significantly to increase. So my preparation, I shouldn't, maybe I shouldn't tell you. My preparation for this meeting tonight is probably hour. As opposed to. You know, five hours, so.
Yeah.
The only thing I will bring up and it is, it is uh technical in ma- nature is. In the header of the policies and procedures, the date is wrong. And when we go to approve these, we should get the file date. Or a new rev date. In that header as opposed to the previous versions.
Yeah.
Anything else?
To sustain our foundation of value added natural resource based industries. I I, yeah, I don't remember reading this back before and uh. It's kind of interesting, isn't it? Why would one be one? Method of industry be mentioned as. Special.
We don't wanna go there.
Yeah, probably not, but I'm just fun, huh?
So I, that was based on a town, is that, that's not even our current town plan or is it?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Yeah, cause it's the twenty twenty to twenty twenty eight town plan.
Okay.
So expiring and.
So I think, I think we, I heard a discussion about term limits. I I'm hearing a discussion about. Our mission statement. So I think when we get together.
I think we need a motion to table this discussion. And action to the till the next meeting. Next regular meeting, which is May twentieth.
Okay, so the, you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's the proper way to do.
I think so.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to table uh this discussion and and any action on this, um. Topic until the next.
So can we back up just a minute friendly? So are we all in as to what us kids think is the topics here? Okay, then, yeah, just make your motion.
Okay, just table this until the next regular meeting of on May twentieth.
Okay.
You second for that?
Yeah. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. We will assume that's protocol. So where are we going next? So. Does any, everybody looked at the minutes? Anybody have any questions about the minutes? So I'll entertain a motion to.
Motion to approve the minutes.
It's still there.
I think he was.
Yeah, I think he did.
Yeah, I remember that.
Our way through.
Usually a little late with things, but. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes says red, say aye. Excuse me, anybody opposed? The extensions, okay. Hmm, the next thing is the March seventy we vote, we vote in the BZ TCA.
Yeah, um.
You got the next three, that might looks easy.
Yeah, I just love to talk y'all's ears off. Um, spring is here and people wanna build things, um. A lot of it, uh, mainly accessory structures. Um, folks wanting to build, uh. It's mostly been accessory structures thus far. Um, you will see the accessory use of an EV charger at the bottom there. Um, that's for the firehouse apartments. Um, they came to me, they have a grant, they said, what can we do this? And I said. Oh, boy, is owning a. Is it, it's in the work currently, um. I discussed it with them, looking at the definition and the zoning regulations of the accessory use, um, I'm. That approval for our accessory use is very contingent on the fact that it's a subordinate use to the multifamily residences. They know that it is not for public use, you know, the, um, it is for the residents and their visitors only, um. That.
So just one charger?
Is one level two charger with two ports. Um, they have one tenant who has an EV. They have a grant, um, they. Applied for it last year, which is. And and at that point, I said, this is impossible. Through this conversation, through looking at our regs, the accessory use clause is one that. Currently using for multifamily. Falls into the accessory use clause. For the situation. Um, but this is why the interim bylaw definitely is showing a need where the zoning gets a little murky. Um, fortunately for the situation, um, zoning fits. I am confident in my approval of this, of it being an accessory use for those apartments. Um.
There's the application just ready to go once it's enacted.
Um, no, this is an approved application for an accessory use. Of just an accessory use, if you go by the regs.
When it's done, but one could. Nitpick on the, I think.
Yeah. 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 One could. There is a fifteen day pill window out there if you wanna nitpick. Um, they also, uh, with this, they had, um, to get a site plan amendment. With their conditional use for those apartments and they went to the DRB. And got a site plan amendment, uh, showing where the connection was to the conduit. Um, went through development review board approval for the site plan amendment. Uh, which is also another reason why I felt I'm all going through with this application.
That makes, that makes sense.
Because it did require additional approval from the development review board on the impacts, um, to parking to electrical. So yes, there is room for nitpicking, but it did go through my review and the design review board and. Multiple, but I didn't, I I wanted to bring that up. Yeah, I wanted to bring that up and just. I'm not trying to hide anything from y'all.
No, no, that's good. So made a good decision. An- another abstract comment is. You know, we're getting peppered with, um, outside units for E pumps. Same voltage, got a box outside, that actually makes noise. And that's okay.
Yeah, that falls under mechanicals. Right?
Yeah, so you don't need a permit to do that.
Right.
At all, but I'm just saying it's inconsistent. To. On one of these little level two chargers. But anyway, that's probably not proven here.
And the reason, the reason I went with the accessory use clause for this. Is because. Not just trying to be like, oh, you wanna do this, let's. I generally, when people wanna do things, try to find a way to. In the regulations, find the definition and. Accessory use, if you look at the definition. Is very.
Although one would argue that it has. No relevance in terms of the structure or living purposes. Not just.
Yeah.
Just the nitpicking.
Just it's. Interpretation always gets muddy and and it's, interpretation is something that you wanna. Stay away from as much as possible and hopefully everything's written. Well enough that there's no interpretation needed. Or there's always possible interpretation, right? Everybody, here's what they wanna hear, but.
So was there, I guess, was this from the DRB reviewed this? Was there a discussion?
Um, Kevin Brown asked why they were here, why they were there. And I said, uh. The impact of the changing the site plan, they're adding new electrical work, um, they're tying into a conduit that they had. Kind of put in originally, um, that site plan will be updated and recorded in land records. Uh, showing the parking space that it will be placed at, where it'll be placed, um, the, um. Ballards that they're gonna be putting in, all that was reviewed, discussed, um. And approved by the development review board.
So there, I guess when I said the discussion is there is no philosophical discussion, was there a philosophical discussion after? Whether it was to aim to put again the way the application was posed or the discussion we've been having.
No, there was no, so, no, there is no scope on that.
So it was pretty benign.
Curious if Mr. Moyers was present that meeting. Just curious, just.
No. No, he was not there.
Okay, moving on.
Um, so that's the zoning report, um. There, yeah, mostly alterations, accessory structures, um. Nothing crazy. I am expecting to see a very large uptick in. Not only building permits, but applications for subdivisions, just as people. Realize that it's warm out and they wanna do things, um. Keeping that going, uh, the next. I'm up for the next one as well, the municipal planning grant. Um, I mentioned this beginning of the year, wanting to apply for the municipal planning grant to do a community townwide survey. Uh, to, um, look into how residents are feeling about development in Bristol. Looking at, um. Kinda get a, an overview on are folks happy with how things are developing? Are they not happy? What are they feeling like they need, they want more of? What do they want less of? Uh, how do they feel about the processes of zoning? Just a general kind of informational gathering, um, and I proposed that, uh, going for that grant to the select board, they denied it. Um, on the basis of wanting to save applying for the municipal planning grant. In order to do the town plan update in two years, which I agree with, um. And I'm going to continue working. As a side project on doing a community ride survey, but it's just gonna be out of my office. Um, I'm hoping to get some of Jessica Teet's, uh, Middlebury students to do some summer. Um, summer work maybe, um, or possibly an intern from. From some other source to get some assistance.
UVM and I can try to dig it, dig out some correspondence on it. I dropped the ball. But UVM has a, um. Program that they have internships or students that are aligned with. Governmental functions and and I can't remember exactly what the department's called, but it's all about. Giving students exposure and that. That might be another good resource for you.
That one, that one with our timeline was very hard to coordinate because of their timeline of availability to. To meet and act on stuff and work on it around their course schedule versus our timeline of what we were looking to do.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the old alma mater. I'll see if they'll give me some.
Let me, and like I said, oh, there's, there was, there was some email trails, so I can. Pop those to you and you would have some contacts or maybe you would understand.
Yeah.
What what I'm talking about.
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't heard that one, but, um. It might just be in a different school that program is in. But that's my update, just. Not going for the grant this year, saving it so that as a planning commission. That grant can be used to assist in the funding of town plan provisions and updates. Come twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty six, we'll probably apply for it next year, um, to start updates.
Good, thank you. So I guess the last one is sort of an annual reminder plea. Um, we, we need to at least envision, I leave this up to individuals to do it. Review the town conflict of interest policy, which, um, is on the internet and.
It's in the meeting materials as well.
Okay, so that's easy access. And. Self-explanatory, so I don't think we have to, to look, wait for watch, anybody. Is there any questions about any of that?
Let's have an off topic question a little bit. I'm sure the answer's here. Let me do that. Uh, that, you know, the four corners, they're, they took out a lot of trees and have the heavy equipment there. I don't know what's going on there. If.
I do.
Yeah, figured.
Clearing trees.
That's all.
They're, I mean, for now, they're clearing trees, they're, um, I don't have an application as of yet on my desk, uh. I think right now that, um. A desire is to, um, display more sheds.
Oh, really?
Like they did test bits for.
Yeah, it does.
Presumably wastewater, I don't know, but it, there's a couple of holes that were poked for testing.
Landing or the entry landing thing on one sixteen.
Yeah, they got a, a state, um. State AOT. State AOT curb cut access permit for that. Um and our building landing pad, I've spoken. Um with Ron LaRose about what is necessary to get. Permitting for displaying those sheds. Um for now, I'm looking at a temporary use permit um. As those are for sale, they're displayed, the structures aren't gonna be there long term, they're for the turnover. That's my understanding of the project. Livingston, who bought it?
Well, those expansion of the property across the street.
Yeah, essentially, for now, that's what I've. But there are no official applications in yet, so there should be no development. And if there is, I will go down and give him the finger, the finger right. Don't do that.
Witness of it all.
There was rumor has a perch lousy there.
Yeah, the soil soil suitability down there is clay. Um so. Probably a good thing that they're digging test pits. Because no matter what they're gonna wanna do, they're gonna need something. I've got a lot of questions about what's going on under.
Very invincible. Okay, moving on to public comment, is there any public comment? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So a motion by Rob, second by Slim, all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.